It is January 30th, 2023, and I'll call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order, and everyone is already joining me in the pledge.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Okay, first up, we have public service announcements. Ken?
First one, our state rep, Simon Cattaldo, would like to let the public know he's holding office hours. He's holding him for Carlisle, Concord, Acton, and Chelmsford. I'll just tell you about the Chelmsford one unless, should I tell them about, not just Chelmsford. Chelmsford was advertised as this Wednesday, the first, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. here in the Town Hall. He's going to have an aide here. He needed to reschedule because they have a legislative session instead. So if you'd like to see him, it's Friday morning, this Friday morning, 9:30 to 11:00. It's helpful if ahead of time, it's not required, but helpful if you could send a note to his legislative aide summarizing the issue you'd like to discuss and/or what time you plan to arrive. The legislative aide email address is kyle.stapleton, so it's C-Y-L-E dot S-T-A-P-L-E-T-O-N at M-A house.gov.
K-Y-L-E.
What's that?
You said C-Y-L-E.
Oh, K-Y-L-E, sorry. K-Y-L-E dot S-T-A-P-L-E-T-O-N at M-A house.gov.
His email is on the list, too.
Although there's no S there, but... The next public service announcement, Chelmsford Ride Public Information Night. Come and learn about the Chelmsford Ride. This is Tuesday, February 7th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. here in room 205 at Town Hall. For questions or more information, feel free to reach out and contact Jim Lanson at 978-254-0446. Next one, we have Chelmsford Works Career Services. Chelmsford Works Career and Staffing with Mass Hire Lowell Career Center will take place, it's the last Tuesday of every month, here at Chelmsford Town Hall from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. And Chelmsford Town Hall Business Development Director, Lisa Moni, will be present. There's going to be jobs, employers, and job search advice for you to have access to. So again, it's the last Tuesday of every month from 12:00 noon to 7:00 p.m. at night. Next service announcement, there are free at-home COVID tests available at the Chelmsford Town Hall, Main Library, and the Senior Center. The expiration dates have been extended and can be validated by visiting the website on the test kit box. So those are available to all residents. Next one is, do you know someone suffering from substance abuse disorder? Get free Narcan at the Chelmsford locations. So the Chelmsford Health Department is proud to announce a new Narcan distribution program. Narcan will now be available at the following locations for those who need it. You can be find them at the Chelmsford Library, Main Branch, the Chelmsford Police Center, Police Station, Chelmsford Center for the Arts, and all Chelmsford Fire Departments. Kind of dovetailing into that is Narcan training is available, save a life, learn how to recognize an overdose. So do you know how to recognize an opioid overdose? Would you feel comfortable administering Narcan to someone who is overdosing? The Chelmsford Health Department will be hosting free Narcan trainings for anyone who would like to learn more about the opioid overdoses and how to save a life using Narcan. The first two training sessions will be held at Chelmsford Town Hall, room lower level 06, on February 7th, and there will be an afternoon session and an evening session. Stay tuned for additional info. Oh, I actually have it. One is at 1:00 p.m. and the other is at 6:00 p.m. And those are here in Town Hall down on the lower level. If you would like, you can register, you go to www.chelmsfordma.gov, and there's a registration link there. Registration is required, and there's limited space. If you have any questions, you can call the Health Department directly at 978-250-5241. The last announcement we have tonight is Care Solace. It's a mental health and referral service for Chelmsford residents and employees. It's not uncommon for individuals to need additional mental health support after the hustle and bustle of the holidays. Care Solace is a free service available to Chelmsford residents and employees to assist them in finding a mental health provider. Please visit caresolace.com/chelmsford-ma or call 888-515-7881 if you or a loved one needs assistance finding a mental health or substance use treatment provider. Remember, it's okay to ask for help.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Yep, just come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Yes, hi, my name is Joe Knight, 11 Cushing Place, Unit 101 in Griss Mill Condominiums. And I guess at some point later in the meeting, you're going to be discussing the parking situation at the Brick House. And prior to the problem on the night before Thanksgiving, I have, I've been engaged with the Assistant Town Manager and Lieutenant Poor from the Chelmsford Police Department and Lieutenant Hall from the Fire Department, because it's been my observation since the pandemic restrictions have been lifted that there's been an ongoing issue over there with parking. That Wednesday night was just sort of the cherry on top of the cake, but... So two things I've been assured that are going to happen in the spring is that, one, the fire lane signs, I don't know how many were there originally, but there's only one or two remaining on the rail trail fence, and there's been continuous parking along that rail trail fence beyond what was approved or at the time Griss Mill went through the planning board process. I think there were seven spots over there. They put the kiosk in in the fall, so I don't know if that took one spot away, but there's frequently more than seven to eight cars parked along that rail trail fence. The striping in the parking lot needs to be redone. That's going to happen in the spring. I'm not sure on the fire lane signs, I don't know why those, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take to get those, but I'd like to see those go back up as soon as possible. And the Brick House has delivery vehicles, and sometimes when you're trying to get through there, the way the delivery vehicles are parked with the parking along the rail trail fence, very narrow to get through. In the summertime, when the rail trail is in full operation, when everybody's coming over with their kids, getting in and out of there is a real circus, and it's imperative that egress from either Cushing Place and Littleton Road need to be maintained because there's kids running around in that parking lot, people are just driving out on the rail trail without, onto the parking lot without looking. You know, it's potentially dangerous situation up there, so we have to have, you know, have to be able to have medical response up there quickly. We're not age-restricted at Griss Mill, but I'd say, I'm 69, I'm probably in the middle there, we've only got a couple of kids living there. So I just want to see the problem resolved and taking care of, you know, everybody's sake. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, in as much as that scope may not be within the license discussions, will you be going up with your staff?
Yeah, it's been discussed at the Traffic Safety Committee and...
Okay, so we'll be talking?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next up, we have committee vacancies, and they're all on one page.
We did it. All right, so for community vacancies, as of this January 30th, the Arts and Technology Education Fund has won an expired three-year term. Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee has won three-year term. CCA Advisory Committee is looking to fill two seats, one, those are one-year terms. Commission on Disability has one three-year term. Community Action Program Committee looking to fill four one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund Committee has one seat available, that's a three-year term. Council on Aging, two three-year terms. Cultural Council is looking to fill one on expired three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. The Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome, those seats expire, those are one-year terms, and they expire each July 31st. Permit Building Committee has one three-year term. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. Robertsville Advisory Committee has one one-year term. If you're interested in serving on a Town Board or Committee, please complete an online application available at the Town website. For more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office, 978-250-5202, or send an email directly to the Town Manager, tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have the one-day beer and wine license for Crake Sauce. Do we have someone here? You can come up to the podium if you'd like.
He's the Crake Sauce guy.
Hi. Should I just say what the, what we're proposing?
Well, first, we need your name and...
Sure. Brian Ruhlman.
And go ahead, if you want to summarize what you're proposing.
Sure. So we are releasing a, we're a hot sauce company that have been around since 2017. We partner with local farmers, and we did a collaboration hot sauce with Navigation Brewery, where we're, we partnered with another local farmer who took their beer and fermented, or turned it into a vinegar that we use in our hot sauce. So we have a space at the Chelmsford Mills, 51 Middlesex Street, and we are going to be, we're proposing to have kind of a welcoming gathering and doing tastings of our hot sauce, and we'd love to have the ability to sample some of Navigation Brewery's beer with local farmers, stores that sell our hot sauce, and some of our customers. So, yeah, that's what we're proposing.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? The only question, is this like, it's a set number of hours where people walk through, or it's you arrive and you stay for the whole thing?
Yes, yeah, so we're, we're, have three different shifts that people have to sign up for, and we have a capacity limit. And so, yeah, we're, it's, the total hours are from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., but we have kind of a shifts that people have to sign up to before we close it off.
Okay. Before we vote, would you like to tell the public what date?
Yes, Wednesday, February 1st.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application for a one-day special license for the sale of beer and wine to Crake Sauce Inc. for February...
It's actually a one-day license, not a special. This is just an application for a special.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, for a one-day license for Crake Sauce Inc. for February 1st for the hours of 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Brick House Action Plan.
Mike Brown from Brick House Center Sports Grill.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Do you, I wanted to just give you an oppor, do you want to take an opportunity to explain what the action plan is? I mean, we've all read it, but the highlights?
Basically what the police and the fire were looking for. Hold on. So they want us to get the barbacks to get crowd, the, we got everybody certified for tips, so that's waitresses, bartenders, all of them. Crowd manager, we had the whole place getting crowd managed so they can see all the stuff that we seen with the whole incident and all that stuff with the fire and all that stuff, so they, they know what's going on with capacity. And basically just everything that we outline here, you know, I think it says it all right here. When we get to a certain point with the thing, with the capacity, we have someone that's going to, you know, start checking and make sure it doesn't get over the capacity. If we expect to have like an over, you know, a big event or something to let the police and fire know, you know, something like, maybe like, obviously the day before Thanksgiving, but like St. Patrick's Day or any other day, that's, that would be busy. Tips and training. We got six more signs, well, we should get six signs that say, you know, no alcohol by any point, please take notice and all that stuff, and then we have, the thing clearly said it's 94 is the capacity inside. Then I think you guys already have the list of the crowd managers and the tips certified.
Okay.
So I think that's about everything.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, I have a few questions. So, so I think that's terrific that, you know, you have so many that have gone through the crowd manager program, but you, so you only had one person who was trained in the crowd management?
No, we had three. Now we have about 10, 10 to 12.
Okay, because there was only one that had a date before in this month that I noticed.
Okay, well, I've always had it, Christina had it, and I had it. I don't know if you want, how we can say that now, but we had more than one crowd manager.
Okay.
And Kristy Sheedy.
Okay.
But now we have all the ways, the barbacks and the bart, every shoe don't have it right now. If they do, we've been on them, so there's a lot. I think it's, a lot of them are stated down here, right? On the bottom of that sheet?
Right, yeah, it has...
So that was as of like, probably two weeks ago.
Right.
So now we even have more than that.
Okay. So it said when you get to 75% capacity, you'll start counting. Well, how are you going to know when you're at 75% capacity?
I don't know, if it gets to like 60 or 70 people, you start, then you have the guy with the clicker, and you start counting people coming in.
Okay, so you're gonna, I guess I still don't get it. I mean, how are you going to know you have 60 people there? I mean, that's, you know...
I mean, you just have to figure it out and say, okay, there's about, I mean, maybe you start at 50 then, but, you know.
Are you suggesting make count as people come in the door and leave?
Well...
If there's 65 seats inside, you know, 65 seats inside, then you know, you've got 29 doors, you know, that can be standing up, you know, in the winter. In the summertime, obviously, you get the deck, and then you gotta, you know, figure out how many seats are out there, get 94 people standing, then you know you're at the capacity.
Okay, I guess, I guess, yeah, okay, if the chief's okay with it, it just seems, I don't know how I'd be able to walk in and know that you're 75% capacity.
Because there's only so many, there's 64 seats inside.
Right.
Then there's 29 seats outside, or whatever, there's 65 and like, I think 29, that you can see how many people are sitting, how many seats are left over.
Okay.
So if you have people standing, if you have more than 29, most in the wintertime, then you know you're over. It's a small place.
Oh, yeah, it is a small place, right. So how did it get so out of control that day?
It just did. It was awful. It's happened probably six times, and that same thing, that day's always out of control. And we didn't want to do the tent, and we didn't want it to get stupid like always, so we didn't. And then we had, to be honest with you, we had probably 150 kids in less than a half hour showing up in Ubers, all, just out of control. They were all coming, I don't know what, there was a, some type of event somewhere else, and everybody takes Ubers now, and then you got that many people thrown in there, and you got, maybe they were going in the back, I don't know, but I was carding everybody where I was on the ramp, and it just, we're not saying we were innocent, you know, but believe me, it wasn't something we wanted to do, because it's not, it's not like we, you know, it helps us when you can't move, it's, just we messed up.
Okay, I mean, was this, is this something in hindsight that you could have done, to just, you know, I mean, you, I applaud you for checking IDs, but, I mean, at that point, you must have known that you were close to, if not over, capacity.
Yes, and about 10:30, it started to get crazy, yes. So we were trying to figure out what to do, and then someone pulled the fire alarm, so I guess they took, you know, made it easier, but yes, we didn't know what to do at that point, if you want to show, it was, it was just way too many kids at one time. It was probably like the kids that wanted to go in a tent, and they just kept coming.
Right, and that brings up a good point about the fire alarm. Why did it not sound inside?
It did sound inside. It was going off inside.
Okay, because the police reports, or maybe the fire report said that it did not sound in, inside.
No, but we already talked to the Fire Department about that, but it was going off inside.
Well, why were people not leaving then?
I don't know, they were, kids, I guess, I don't know. There was people leaving, it just, some don't listen.
If I were in a business like, in a, you know, a restaurant like that, and the fire alarm went off, I think I'd leave.
I know, I would too. I would too.
You say that, but I was at 110 Grill, and the fire alarm went off at lunchtime. Nobody got out of their seats.
Okay, ma'am, you don't need to, you don't need to defend Mike.
I mean, I know what you're saying, but just tell the truth.
Well, even if it were crowded like that.
Would either of the chiefs like to say anything? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Manager. On that point, did it, did it go off in the building? I'm sure it did, but when we got there, it was silence. Somebody hit the button to silence it.
Okay.
So maybe somebody left, but when we got there, the place was full. So to answer your question, somebody hit the panel, hit the button to silence it, which basically takes the horn strobes and deactivates it.
Oh, is that easy to do?
If you hit the button, yes.
Okay, but...
Well, I, let me take that back. It shouldn't be accessible, and that's one of the things we've addressed with this process. They shouldn't have a key. We do not want anybody having a key. That panel belongs to us. He owns it, we operate it. So that key is not supposed to be available to staff, only to the Fire Department. That's why we have an Knox box.
So when, when it's pulled, it should remain locked until the Fire Department gets there?
It should go off until we clear it.
Okay.
Until we go in there, we investigate, we determine there's no emergency, or if there is, we correct it.
And...
Then the officer will make the determination when to silence it.
And the safeguard for that is that only the Fire Department has the key?
That is correct.
Okay.
And in a case like that, that's why we want it to go off. We want people to evacuate.
Right.
Because we can't effectively do our investigation until people are out. That didn't happen.
So, so what assurances do you have that, that somebody can't do that now?
That's a good question.
Change the law.
I mean, the assurances we have, we've asked the question, we want the key, we want it in the Knox box that we have control over, but does that prevent them from asking their vendor for a key? No, it doesn't. So there's a certain trust here, that going forward, that doesn't happen again.
Well, okay, so the vendor has the authority to give...
The, the testing company that comes in to test you, they have keys.
Uh huh.
They have to have keys because they have to, you know, control the panel.
So Chief, should the action plan just be updated to put a statement to that effect? That...
To put a statement that they're not to have, that's fine.
They're going to safeguard the key where you want it to be safeguarded?
Sure, yes. We can put some language to reflect that.
Do you have any problem with that, Mr. Brown?
We have a box outside, that's fine. Chief, can you explain how the key's safeguarded, the Knox box?
So the Knox box is a, it's like a safe. It's outside the building, you have one outside the Town Hall. In the event of an emergency, we go to the building, and that key is keyed for the Chelmsford Fire Department. So if, say Lowell comes here mutually, they need our key to get into that building, and that's a safeguard, so people will hand their keys over, we safely secure the key, we arrive on scene, we open that key box up to get the key to get in. And also, in that key box is typically keys to the fire alarm panel. Somebody had a key, somebody got into the fire alarm panel and silenced the panel. So we arrived on scene, that's why the building was full. So to your example, yes, people will typically, in our experience, will evacuate. You might have some that will linger, but we get there, they will leave. In this case, that didn't happen.
Are you satisfied, Chief, with most everything that happened that night that you've...
I'm satisfied that we came up with a reasonable plan. I'm also satisfied going forward, there's going to be, it doesn't stop here.
Right.
There's going to be ongoing conversations, and we've kind of had some frank discussions, both myself and Police Chief Spiny and his staff, my staff, I think we're...
We had plenty of cooperation from them, right?
They have been. They've been very forthcoming. When we ask them to meet, they come down, but it doesn't stop here, tonight. I mean, as discussed, we get St. Patrick's coming up, we got big football games coming up, so there are other opportunities, and we want people to do it, but do it safely.
Thank you.
But we want them to reach out. And in this instance, that night, they should have reached out a little bit earlier. We would have helped them. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Spiny?
Good evening, just as far as the perspective from the Police Department. Clearly a concerning night. I talked to the officers and supervisors on scene, this was not too far away from being out of control, and that's when my offices and the public get hurt. That being said, we've had a lot of positive meetings with the management, and my concern on this was the breakdown in communication. There was a breakdown in communication internally at the Brick House, and there was a lack of communication or a delay in communication between the Brick House and the Police Department. And we've had that discussion with Charlie as well, that phone calls should have been made a lot earlier, earlier. Chief Ryan just alluded to it. So I reiterated that, that the communication has to be fluid and constant, especially way before things start getting out of control. Otherwise, it turns into mayhem. So I'm satisfied with the meetings we've had since then. I think it's a decent plan moving forward, but the onus is on the Brick House to let us know when they're going to have a large scale of it, not the other way around, so...
Or even if they're not planning it, and then people show up, like you're saying, happened, to call you ahead of time to say, we need...
Or just call right away.
Yeah, we think if a cruiser's parked in that parking lot, and kids have just shown up, they're going to look and go, we're out of here.
Right, so if we got, if we had indication that there was starting to be an issue, officers would deploy. It could be as simple as sitting in the cruisers, like you just said.
Yep.
And that's a, that's an optic.
Yep.
If you need to kick it to the next level, will the officers get out, stand with staff? We'll do that. But I'd rather do it that way than getting there with people refusing to leave the building, and you factor in a little bit of intoxication amongst some of the patrons, you have a problem.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or suggestions for changes to the action plan?
I think the most important thing that's on here is for you guys, and you could have done that that night, is to call the police, get some help. You know, you can take all the classes you want, but if the management on site isn't picking up the phone and helping themselves, you know, you can give me all the certificates you want, and it's not going to be as effective as making that call. So I'm hoping that that's where we're at.
Yeah, I think I'd say what Mark said, I think I'd rather have you call more times and have the police say, oh, it's fine, it didn't blow up than one time where you didn't call, and it does blow up.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the, the process of them having the employees get the certifications will help raise their own awareness and level of consciousness about it. So it's not really the certificate itself, but the whole process.
Yeah, the day before Thanksgiving would be on me and Charlie, that wouldn't really be on them. They didn't really do anything wrong. We, we should have controlled this all.
Yeah.
Okay.
And thank you for taking responsibility.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so what I noted on the action plan was that you'll work with Chief Ryan to add something about the safeguard for the fire alarm box.
Yep.
Is there anything else on the action plan? If not, the other matter that we have to decide is whether or not you want to take the, the board wants to take this to a hearing, because we left that open pending this discussion.
I don't.
I don't either.
And I don't.
As long as it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think if it happens again, we'll be in a, having a different conversation.
Yes.
And I, I want to thank you and Mr. Mickel again for the responsibility and accountability you've assumed through this whole process.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We don't have to vote or anything, right? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
You're all set, thank you.
And their license is good, right?
Yeah, we did that last time. Oh, did we, did we vote the license only through March?
Oh, no, we didn't, no, we didn't.
We did it the whole year, okay. That was the other one. So next up, Paul, we have reports and presentations.
Yeah, Police Chief James Spiny is here, giving, provide the Traffic Safety Committee monthly report.
Okay, good evening again. With regards to current actions, we are continuing to do traffic enforcement, speed monitoring across the entire community, just a little bit of 2022 data, calendar year for last year. Motor vehicle stops, 5,444. Speed enforcement is which is when the cruiser's set up to do radar and other observations with regards to traffic safety, 1,649, and just over 1,900 citations were issued last year. So the officers are certainly being proactive when it comes to motor vehicle enforcement on a consistent basis. Pending actions, grant request for new school zone speed signs for the South Rose School. The current signs that are there, the flashing lights, I'm sure you're all familiar with, have reached end of life. They've actually been serviced a number of time, number of times over the last 12 months. So Director Clancy, we all agreed at the Traffic Safety Committee that those, they are one of the oldest sets in town, so they're due to be replaced first.
And I believe the Byham School is next to have upgraded version of those signs. They're also easier to deactivate on weekends, the current signs are there now, they'll flash, sometimes you'll see them on non-school days, because you can't set them to go off. So the new ones have that capability. Completed actions, we took a look at the intersection of Steadman Street and Dalton Road, possibly restricting access to Dalton Road from Steadman Street. As part of looking at that, we conducted a crash analysis for the intersection of Steadman Street and Dalton from December of 2021 to December of 2022, and we only had 13 crashes there. So I've heard a lot of comments about this being a chronically bad intersection, the data does not show that. And a breakdown of those crashes, number of crashes with parked vehicles, one, number of crashes with animals, one, was a deer, number of crashes with pedestrians or cyclists, zero, number of crashes with other vehicles in traffic, 11. Majority of these crashes took place between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. One took place at 2:00 AM. In addition to doing the crash analysis, we conducted a speed study on Subway Ave. Average speed, 21.5 miles an hour. That was deployed for a solid week. In addition to that, we monitored the intersection during high-volume times. The officers made no note of any chronic or consistent backups of traffic approaching that intersection. So with that data in mind, the traffic committee does not recommend any modifications to Steadman Street and Dalton Road. Addition, completed actions, traffic improvements, bottleneck reduction grant for Barriker and Golden Cove. This resulted in the installation of two multi-way video detection cameras to improve signal timing at that intersection. And just to clarify, these cameras do not capture vehicle type or license plates, it's strictly a cameras that capture volume, and I believe the state has access to those. So that's the report.
Questions? So I'm thinking back in our comments on that Steadman, Sylvan, that whole area, back when, I think it was three or four meetings ago when George brought that up, and I don't really remember a discussion on excessive crashes, but it was more the amount of volume that was going through the neighborhoods as ways to cheat that intersection when there's a big backup at the stop. So I think my concern was just, not speeds, not crashes, but just the volume going through the neighborhoods as a way around the Steadman intersection.
So I still don't understand what the modification of restricting a left-hand turn to Dalton would do. In my opinion, what that would do is force traffic into Subway.
No, no, I think what we were saying, though, is it's not that there was any restriction on Dalton or Steadman, it was as you're coming down Dalton, say, from North Road, you cross through that intersection, and as you're heading towards Coles, it was more no right turn there in the morning, up those side streets, and then in the afternoon, no left turn on 110 down those side streets. Because, you know, if someone's coming down 110 at night, and they come up to that left-hand turn to take a left on Steadman, there's a long line, and you get stuck at that light for a couple sets. So people go around them, and they just go up to the next road and take a left. And it's directing a lot of volume into those neighborhoods so that they don't have to wait at that light on Golden Cove, Steadman. They just go past it, they pass the gas station, and then they take one of the next two lefts, and the neighbors just said there's just a ton of traffic, you know, 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night, it's just car after car after car after car, when you might have kids outside playing and doing stuff like that. And then the same is true in the morning. They're taking a right to get down those roads to get into Lowell instead of staying on Steadman straight and taking a left on 110 when you get down to Moonstones.
So you're suggesting that we restrict all those side roads off of Dalton Road in the morning, taking a right, and then just the opposite?
I think what caused it is.
Taking a left, I think, Jerry.
What caused it was, you know, people saw the no-left turn, I don't know the name of the road. Is that as you're coming down Steadman?
Yeah.
You know, because people were just going through all of those neighborhoods to get around behind Westlands to get out by Coles. And what's that's done now is it's pushed more traffic further down Steadman to that light, and now they're trying to find other ways to get through there. Instead of going straight and getting stuck at the end of Steadman at Golden Cove, they're taking a left and taking a right and then taking a right back on 110 to get to the highway. So it's just forcing a lot of cars into those neighborhoods that they didn't want.
I don't doubt that, but it's going to be a domino effect, no matter what you do. If you restrict those roads, you're going to push more cars to stay on Dalton to get to Chelmsford Street and take that dangerous left turn, or you're going to force more volume to stay on Steadman to go to Chelmsford Street. And then you could have a potential backup there and need re-timing of the lights, et cetera. So there's only so many places to put the volume. I would agree with you.
And I need to discourage some of the volume, excuse me, though, that's, I think what they were looking to try to do, because that's all cut through anyway.
I think that's a big deal, what you're suggesting. That would be a major effort, and we'd probably have to speak to a lot of residents.
Yeah.
Because it's going to affect them as well. You're going to have residents not being able to access their house on the way they used to, because you just can't say residents only, there's no way to police that.
Right.
So that's significant to make a change that widespread. And you'd have to do it widespread, because if you did just one, as you know, you're going to push into the next street.
Yeah.
So you'd probably have to do like four or five.
Well, probably.
Both ways.
Probably one of the side effects is what was already done, was, because you can't take a left turn there, they go down to the next one, and they, you know, they take a left, and like you said, it's just going to keep adding, each one you put up puts more volume onto the next one.
I mean, the good news is we're not seeing speeds, but I get it, if I lived there and I had 500 cars passing by, it's obviously a concern. I just don't know if there's an easy solution, other than really significant restriction.
Yeah. Well, I think, for my curiosity, you've investigated it far enough, I think what I would, if a resident were to ask me, I'd say, well, they're not seeing speed, they're seeing volume, but, I mean, we're seeing volume everywhere.
Correct. So we'll keep on it. I got the board going up again tomorrow to get Subway coming from Chelmsford Street. I'm interested in that type of, what's going on there.
That'd be in the afternoon, right?
Yeah, so I want to catch the afternoon levels, and then we'll follow that up with enforcement and maybe the sign, whatnot. We don't put the sign out generally in the winter, but we haven't forgotten about that area, we'll certainly keep it a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So Paul?
Yeah, Chief, before you go, since Mr. Knight's still here in the audience, could you just, I mean, we've summarized, and I know Chief Ryan's here as well, we've discussed the issue at Griss Mill in terms of the access and parking, and I think it was noted in the statements that he made was, it will be restriped in the spring, and we've addressed the issues of the parking in the corridor, and again, that's one way. Cars are not supposed to be exiting Griss Mill.
Right.
Through Brick House Pizza, and that was made clear during the anywhere permitting process and so forth. And I know the way we left it was, when DPW obtains those signs, the additional signs will go up, you know, for the parking restrictions along the rail trail. But is there anything else you want to add, but while you're here?
No, I mean, we've had a number of meetings over this. I assigned Lieutenant Poore to handle this, along with Captain Hool, and that's exactly right. We made the decision in the spring, when we can do so, so the product actually adheres to the pavement, we're going to restripe. At any time, anybody can call, if they see a parking problem that's hazardous or dangerous, if there's no egress for emergency vehicles, we're on 24/7. If someone sees a parking situation that needs to be addressed, we'll go out now. We don't need anything to be restriped, but that is the plan for the spring, restriping. I know Director Clancy said that the signs have been ordered, I believe, and those will be deployed as soon as they're ready, and we're going to take care of the rest of it in the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Paul.
Next, our Executive Director for the Chelmsford Center for the Arts, Lexi Latimore, is here to provide the quarterly update regarding the activities. You have the presentation, which I know she'll sort of walk you through on the screen. Good evening, Lexi.
Hi, Lexi. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here today. I am really grateful to have an opportunity to share with you where we're at, how we did this fall, and what our intentions are for the upcoming spring, and how that's going to inform what we plan to continue to do in next fiscal year. So I submitted an executive summary, and we've really been focusing on the 2019 Strategic Plan roadmap, in which there were three major areas that I highlighted in my last report, audience building and theater, marketing, and financial growth. So just very quickly, our audience has grown tremendously at our open house, we welcomed 550 people approximately, and by the end of the season at our holiday prelude celebration, we welcomed just about 1,550 people. So that was really exciting to see that we're growing, we're reaching more folks. In addition to that, the strategic plan outlined that we should really focus more on theater. And so we founded a theater program, theater company called The Playground. We've had one public meeting and many meetings with a board of volunteers that have signed on to help organize. They produced the Alumni Talent Show, which was the show that we had, and also began supporting with the murder mystery. So we had two shows this fall, both of them made a net profit. So for the murder mystery, we made $2,279 net profits, and for the Alumni Talent Show, $3,089 for net profit, which, when we look at the grand scheme of, will this fund a salary? No, but we have never made a net profit in the history of shows at the CCA, so we're looking at growth here, which is exciting, and it was a great test to see, okay, folks who responded to this plan said that we want theater, and that seems like that has matched, that folks have come out, we've sold out both shows and made money on them. For marketing, we were able to reach 16.6K people on Facebook and 2.8K people on Instagram. That was around December, so those numbers have likely increased since then, but we've really been ramping up our efforts online and on social media. And finally, in terms of financial growth, I've applied to a number of grants. We've received $19,250 specific to programs. We actually just got a grant today for an additional $10,000 from the Mass Cultural Council, their cultural sector recovery fund, it's related to COVID-19, and helping arts organizations just continue to get back on their feet. So again, those more so cover program costs. However, it's exciting to see that as we offer more programs that are open to the public, that we're able to garner some support there in such a short amount of time. Finally, I have worked on founding a Friends of the Chelmsford Center for the Arts, similar to the Friends of the Library or the Friends of the Senior Center, who are able to do some fundraising on our behalf. The Dacey-Zuzas Endowment, which has about $14,000 in the endowment, has been transferred over into that account, so we have a little bit of a nest egg from the partners organization, which is no longer in existence, and from the generosity of the Zuzas family and their endowment that will now nest in the Friends of the CCA. I want to pause and share a little metaphor. It's artsy, I'm sorry. I'm not that sorry, but I'm excited. There are really two models, I think, and Paul and I have talked about this a bit. So since, really, 1979, I found an article from that time where we were figuring out what's going to happen with this beautiful building. I was not here, I was born in the 90s, but we were figuring out what is going to happen with this beautiful space. And the same questions that I was asked in 2022 were being asked in 1979. How are we going to fund it? The economy is challenging, how are we going to fundraise? What are we going to do? And so we've relied so far on mostly what I call a rental model, where we have different groups coming in and they're renting, which is great, because it's a beautiful space and people love it, and they can do what they need to do. My mentor, a mentor of mine who's wonderful, asked me, as I was juggling producing the events and doing the rental model, Lexi, are you planting fake flowers or are you planting seeds? I have a little visual. The fake flower model is, these aren't the best fake flowers ever, but the fake flower model is really thinking about, okay, we have these rentals, we can prop something up, I can get money coming in, right? I have money coming in, the more rentals that I do, the more money that we get to have. At the same time, there are limitations to that. That model doesn't necessarily grow, it's fixed, and it's related to how much time do I have that I can offer a rental, and how much space, and at what reasonable cost. Right now, we're charging $10 an hour, we've been charging $10 an hour historically for different groups to rent, which at this point, we've said, you know, in this sense, we can't do that, we have to up that price for these groups. We're still going to keep it reasonable, but at least in the rental model, let's make sure that we're maximizing that approach, so that my knitting ladies who meet in a small room at 10:00 AM on a Monday aren't paying the same amount as the larger bands and different groups that have more people. The problem, or the challenge with the rental model, is that it's very hard to fundraise on it. If each of you has a different group that meets in the building, it's really hard for me to say, hey, Pat has this great group, and they meet in my building, will you donate money to me so that Pat can meet with their group, right? Versus having an open program that we offer to the entire community. Same thing with grants. It's, you know, if, let's say, Pat's group applies for a grant themselves, it's very hard for me to do so on behalf of another group that isn't open to the public, particularly when I'm their landlord. That's a little bit odd. And finally, corporate sponsorship, same thing. So you get into this model of, we can only make this much, and I'm not able to pull into other fundraising supply to cultivate relationships, to bring grants in, all of that. So what we want to do is plant seeds. And there are three different seeds that we really, really want to plant, three different focus areas, most of which have come out of the strategic plan. So we know that people are excited about theater, and we plan to continue cultivating that. Eventually, we want to be able to offer a theater camp during the summer. It's not something that we could do for this summer, we can offer workshops, but the camp designation requires more time and planning, but we're beginning that work now. Those camps are able to make a good amount of money and also support our students. We've gotten so many emails and inquiries around, what are we doing for our kids in the summer, is there something that you can offer? We're going to continue to have community open events and really open up our downstairs floor more consistently, so that we're having space where you can come in just to come and to hang out, whether it's a game night or trivia. You know, we think about the library or the senior center, for example, anyone is welcome to go to those programs. It's not a private rental necessarily. So we're trying to offer more of that throughout the spring season. And finally, we really want to focus on our teenagers, and I want to read a couple of really important statistics around why. So in 2021, the CDC gathered a bunch of data across the country around how our teens were doing, and the short of it is that they're not doing that well statistically. 37% of high school students were experiencing poor mental health due to the COVID-19 pandemic. 44% reported feeling sad or hopeless persistently. 55% reported emotional abuse by a parent or other adult. 11% experienced physical abuse, and 29% experienced extreme stress due to job loss or transition of the parent during the pandemic. And so as we look at all of the resources that are offered in town, I think that the high school does a wonderful job of offering students as much as they can within the confines of school and the time that they have. But in terms of third spaces that are really designated towards our young people, our teenagers specifically, there are more limitations. And so we want to really utilize this opportunity to use our space to offer programming for teens, offer safe space for them, and really focus on supporting their mental health better through the arts.
Great.
Thank you.
Comments?
What's your feedback been, you know, from the, maybe the people that previously rented, maybe other general audiences and so forth? How's the feedback been to you?
That's a really good question. So the feedback has been very split. On the one hand, I get a ton of positive feedback from folks who are newly engaged and who are engaged around the theater, or the teenagers, or just the public programming. There have been bumps in the transition in terms of those groups that are used to renting, those groups that are used to renting at $10 an hour, those groups that are used to our staff kind of navigating the line between, are we a landlord, are we a community? How do we really function together? And so we plan to have a meeting, actually, last Friday, and I've met with every single head of each and every group multiple times. I feel like there are, majority of the groups have been, have worked really well with us and have been really excited about the changes and. and have been really excited about the changes and, you know, or like, Lexi, I know that we're working this through and it's an ongoing conversation. And then there have been those that, you know, don't want to pay more than $10 an hour, which I understand, or, you know, I get it, I get both sides. So I'm trying to be an advocate for that community while also juggling the demands of, is it fair, is it equitable for me to charge everyone $10 an hour knowing that, you know, we have a response to the wider community, not just a couple of smaller groups. But I'm doing my best, again, to meet with every person and did a lot of that work, starting in August, laid out a whole four-phase plan that I'm happy to share with the board. That was sent out to everyone beginning of August. And then I spent two weeks meeting with every single person. It was hours of work. And I've continued to do so and I'm happy to still do so. I know that change is tough. And, yeah, I think that some of the feedback that we've gotten around, you know, it seems like the building is closed. And often that's due to, there are groups in here that are rehearsing, but if the doors aren't open or if there isn't a sign saying, hey, come on in, folks don't know, you know, are they accessible? And so we're working on setting set business hours, having the box office and the gallery have consistent hours to just help folks know where to find us and how. Does that answer your question, Mark? Thank you for asking.
Anything else?
The only comment I have is I like your analogy of planting seeds versus your fake flowers. You're focusing a bit more on your recurring revenue, which is your summer camps, right? I mean, you want the stuff that, you know, if you're renting it to one-off wedding, baby showers, wedding showers, things like that. You don't know if they're coming back next year, but if you're running a camp that gets known in the area to be a great summer camp, you can count on that revenue every year. So I like your two-pronged approach, similar to like a restaurant that has the regulars and then has the room rentals, right? And so I like the business sense you're taking, the approach you're taking here.
Thank you.
I appreciate the focus and the advancement on the strategic plan. You really seem to have accomplished a lot in a very short period of time.
Thank you.
And set us up for moving forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you for your support. I know most of you attended an event this fall and it really meant a lot to me and other community members to see that present, so I really appreciate it.
And did we get notice of another grant for them today?
Yeah, but it's embargoed until it's announced publicly, but yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's noted.
I shared that with the board, the way you shared with me.
Thank you.
Did you want to talk about the spreadsheets and all, or?
Um, the, no.
I know they're riveting.
They look, they're less scary looking than they are. I mean, you know how to read these, but...
It's nice to see them.
Oh, that's good, that's good. I'm excited to continue to use this template. Everything that is shared here are estimates, in a sense of, you know, for fiscal year '24, we're still figuring out what exactly is that going to look like. But setting up this model allows us to plug and play as we go and to just keep track of everything each month to update. It's a really usable format for us and I think will just keep us on target in terms of, you know, what are we bringing in, what are we putting out? Where can we skinny things up? Where can we invest and kind of plant a seed to see that grow a little bit more? What's worth that and what can we not afford to do right now?
Website, when do you expect that to be?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, February 1, isn't it good? So it's technically done, but it'll launch on Wednesday. So look out for that, I'm very excited about that.
Paul, what is the, do you have any updates on the earmark?
Yeah, we literally got it today. The state responded. We've had, you know, we had, I believe we had four earmarks. The first response back I had from the forms that I submitted on behalf of the town, we received a response today. I forwarded to Lexi to fill out the information that's requested by, in this case, the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. And I imagine we'll get that done, you know, within a week or so. And then they'll send us the contract, then we can begin to utilize those funds. So, yeah, we just received word on that today and I kicked it over to Lexi and I'm sure we'll turn that around. Basically, they want to know how the money's going to be expended, the mission of the organization and so forth. So that actually is coming today. I'm hoping to get the same response on the others probably in the next day or so, or a few days, since it's been over a month since we were notified to submit the earmark form.
Do you have any sense yet, either of you, as to whether you're going to fully expend the ARPA funding?
Oh yeah, I fully expect that. I mean, because one of the challenges, now, we...
Well, it's going to take time.
Yeah, it's a real challenge, because let's acknowledge the fact that the vision and movement that Lexi is doing is quite different than the vision and activities that transpired over the last decade, the initial decade of the organization. I think on either model, quite frankly, it's a challenge. The size of the facility makes it a challenge in terms of the space. Even the events that Lexi spoke about had capacity. They sold out both events. And that limited space of 200 or 150 is the binding constraint. It's the binding constraint in the past and it's likely going to be the binding constraint in the future. And I like that, also explains why we, when we interim step, we looked for would the third party want to operate and manage the facility, there was no interest. And it's, so I guess the long-winded way of saying is, I think when we need to utilize the ARPA funding, we're going to obviously draw upon the state earmark. And then, as I said to Lexi in discussions we've had over the last few weeks, we've got to figure out what the bounds are in terms of, you know, what do we foresee as being that gap that, you know, that may have to be, you know, addressed by the town going forward? Because it doesn't appear at this point, I know her model is in its earlier stages and she's only been there just over six months, there still appears to be a fiscal challenge, no matter which direction that you go with because of the size of the facility. And I think as Mark noted with his questions, we are seeing some tension. I'm being contacted, perhaps some of you are as well, by previous users of the facility who are, you know, who are sort of, you know, challenged, uncomfortable, I guess, with the transition in this. And I've asked, and we've had discussions on this, you know, can you make the tent whole and bring everybody under the umbrella and try to, you know, accommodate the ongoing previous users with the new flow? And that's a difficult balance and I know that's something we'll continue to work upon. So, but short answer is yes, we're likely to use all the ARPA funds going forward and likely draw upon the full state grant. And I think probably within six to 12 months from now, we'll know where it is going forward in terms of ongoing, in terms of the Friends group that she's, that Lexi spoke about in terms of what support they may have in terms of fundraising, other grant opportunities she's exploring from foundations and so forth.
Thank you. Anything else? Thanks, Lexi.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Lexi.
So next up, we have the discussion regarding our civic engagement goal for youth and young adults. I'll start with youth first. I put a note in the packet, I did meet with the K-12 social studies coordinator in the school system. There's a number of civics and related programs and classes. At the end of the discussion, Stephanie Quinn suggested, and I agree, that a logical starting point would be for us to go into the classrooms and get whatever ideas the students have in terms of things that they feel would help strengthen our civic engagement with our youth in the community. We did talk about potentially inviting them to a meeting. It doesn't seem that that's practical to do because of their schedules and will likely get more participation and more engagement if we can go to them. So I put the dates there that, for the next three, there's two classes that she suggested we visit. We can have up to two select board members for each class without stepping over open meeting law. And my thought was that if we could get one or two board members assigned to go to each of the classes, then whoever goes can document the input they receive and then we can bring that back to the board for a future meeting. I don't know if anybody has any other ideas about that or if that sounds good. Then I want to check on people's availability and desire to go to one or more of these classes. Just note that February 8, it's a shorter class time because of the half-day schedule that the high school has, so it's like a half an hour at best. You have a little bit more time, depending how much discussion there is on the other two dates. So my first question would be, who on the board is interested in going to a class?
I'd be willing to go, sure.
Okay, Ken, yes or no?
You know me, I've been, so yeah, I'll do it again.
Are you guys interested?
Yeah.
All right, so then what I would suggest is that we take two of you for one of them and two of you for the other and make sure you have a scribe. And have fun, but don't take over the conversation. So George, you're available on the 10th?
Yep.
Does it matter what time, the 7:19 or the 8:23?
Either one.
Does somebody want to pair up with George?
I can't that day.
You can't on the 10th?
No.
I can't do the 10th either.
Can you do the 10th, Ken?
What time is it?
It's either 7:19 or 8:23.
No, I can't.
Can you do the 17th, George?
I'm going to be away that week.
Okay.
I can do the eighth for two of you, either one I can do.
I'm available on the 10th, but I don't want to step in if the four of you can cover it.
I guess...
I'm not available on the 17th.
Would it, on the 10th, would it be the 8:23 or the 7:19?
Whichever one you want to do.
I could, I guess I could do the 8:23. I can't do the 7:19 or 8:19.
George, could you do 8:23 with Ken on the 10th? Okay, so you guys can cover civics at 8:23.
And they usually send you a list of questions beforehand, so...
No, 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 this isn't us going in to answer questions. This is us going in and setting the precedent that we want to increase youth engagement in the community and we want to listen to what ideas they have.
Got it. So this is more of a listening session?
It's very much a listening session. And we need you to write down what you hear and bring it back to the board. So Pat and Mark, can you cover the AP government at 11:51 on Friday, the 17th?
Yeah, I can do the 17th.
I can do that.
So you guys can do that one? All right, so I'll send an email to Ms. Quinn and I'll copy you and she'll set it up, okay? The other part to our goal was the young adult portion. We had both youth and young adults identified. So I just wanted to have a quick conversation with the board about what a next step would be for that. Do we want to just allocate a portion of one of our meetings and take public input, first of all, and see if people want to come forward with ideas? Or do you want to do something else? I was just thinking that would parallel what we're doing with these.
Good question.
Well, what, I don't know. We had talked about young adult, meaning, like, for example, we have college students who serve on some of our boards and committees. We had also talked about increasing civic engagement from some of the, like, the younger families or younger couples in town or younger singles in town who live in the generations earlier than ours, later than ours, I guess is a better way to say it. So how would you articulate that target?
I don't know how to articulate it, I'm trying to figure out how to reach them.
I think that's a tough thing.
Well, I, yeah, I mean...
Because I think if you, whatever outlet you use to try to reach them is kind of dictating, you know, get in here. I don't know of a broad-spectrum approach where you're looking for singles, parents, married, young kids, you know what I mean? Like, if you do it through the library, if you do it, say, through the CCA and you advertise it that way, you're going to get, one, if you go to the schools and ask for mommy and me groups or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, however we try to reach out to them is going to sort of dictate the crowd we're going to get. I don't know how to get to a broad spectrum of that age group, is my question.
I doubt that you'll get a crowd, no matter how you reach out.
No, I don't think you're going to get a crowd. And I think, I mean, you could have people who are, who have other, who aren't in that age group who have ideas, who want to come forward and give us ideas. I mean, like the resident who spoke to me last year. So Paul, the outlets the town uses right now are primarily Facebook, right?
Their website.
And I don't even know how many of them are on Facebook anymore. A lot of people do Instagram and other things instead, but... I mean, I think, what other outlets do you want to try?
I have no idea. I'm not a communication guy.
Lexi has an idea.
Am I allowed?
Yeah, come on up.
Okay, well, stop me if this is, okay. I will not speak on behalf of my generation. I am a millennial. And it sounds like you're targeting millennials and then, through the high school, Gen Z babies. I think for millennials, as one who grew up here and has come back, I think something social would be great. And I am more than happy to host it at the CCA if that's desired. Something where folks can come and...
The question is, how do we reach them?
Oh, well, because they're not tracking the town website. They're not on Facebook and they're not going to check the website. So I think it would have to be, again, if you make a partnership, whether it's with us, if it's with the library, if it's with another entity that has Instagram for millennials and TikTok for younger ones. I think you invite them to an event, to an event, and come and have something light to eat, have a little bit of drink, something, and then have whatever discussion you want to have at that time and have an interactive listening session then. But I think making a partnership, because the town doesn't have an Instagram, right? If I'm, yeah, and it might not be as flexible to, I think you might need to partner in a way to advertise and have it be an open town hall. You'll automatically, just by not only targeting Facebook, you will automatically have a higher chance of reaching
Thank you.
folks in their 30s.
Thank you.
Yeah. But again, happy to partner if that feels good.
I know how to ask them, like, you're like my age, I'm like, I don't know what that is. It's like, what, are you 24 or are you 30? I don't know where we're going with this.
Yeah. Millennials, Gen Z, I think it's maybe easier to think in those terms, but hope that helps. Yeah, thanks.
Paul, were you going to say something?
No.
And maybe not even the formal, you know, program or listening, you know, maybe, you know, like having...
Something else going on.
Yeah, something else or having like, almost like booths set up with maybe us speaking about some of the things that we do one-on-one with people rather than speaking to everybody at once. Because everybody has different interests and different goals and not everybody wants to hear the same presentation.
But you had open meeting lines.
Do you think it's similar to what the library, I mean, what the senior center has, where they have that volunteer fair? Problem is that the senior center, you're not going to get the Gen Z.
Millennials at the senior center, they don't even look at Facebook.
We could do it at the CCA and promote it as being at the CCA. So you were saying something about open meetings?
What are you, oh, you're saying, I thought you meant us standing behind booths.
Well, yeah, us meeting with people that maybe have an interest in something having to do with government.
Right.
I think if you use the word government, you're going to turn them off. Volunteerism or whatever.
Then civic engagement, you know, something like that, but...
Yeah.
I mean, is it, I mean, you've seen people do like hours at the Java Room. Is that the kind of thing you're talking about? You know, I mean, kind of what Simon Cattaldo was doing earlier tonight where you sort of have a time that you stop in and...
Yeah, almost on a bigger scale.
Yeah, I may be way off this, but I think you go to like Sunny Meadows and have a cornhole tournament and kind of fair, you know, where you have some, bring in Navigation Brewery and, you know, you turn it into like this event where you invite 26 to 35-year-olds to come down. where you invite twenty-six to thirty-five-year-olds to come down and bring kids if you have them. And if not, we want to get you interested in your input and community involvement. Even if you say civic or government, you're immediately gonna go, I don't want to be involved. But if you say get community involvement, help, help turn Chelmsford into a better town, more open town.
If our, if our purpose as a board is to gather input, can we, can we do, can we convene as a board in that manner without it being a public meeting?
Yeah, but we wouldn't be convening. We would be, make, have an individual conversations and then, like you said, bring it all back to here to consolidate everything.
I mean, even if you had to advertise as a public meeting and then you shut the whole thing down for thirty-five minutes where you said, okay, everybody stop, come over here, we're just gonna address.
That'll be the last one we ever have like that.
You can do it that way, Ken. I'm not doing it that way.
I'm just saying, I think the only thing you can do is to distract. Like, I think your idea is a good one with, you know, cornhole or some other kind of thing. And just to be out there and start to just talk with the folks that are there. Don't try to turn it into a laboratory experiment because it's not gonna work. I think we just need to start engaging with them and then figure out, keep doing it and then figure out where it goes from there.
And ask them, what would, what would encourage you
Individually, yeah.
to be more involved?
Yeah, and not, they won't get fooled twice.
Would, would, would somebody, I, I guess, do you want me to put this on an agenda while you have time to think about it? Or does somebody want to put an idea or a recommendation together and bring it back? Just to pull the thread on this? Or do we just, are you ready to decide?
Well, the, the other thing, just as a thought, the other thing would be, what are the other types of events that are already going on in town?
Oh, that's a good idea.
that tend to draw people already? And then we could just kind of fit ourselves in there, just show up, be there, talk to people and start from that standpoint.
In the summer, there's the farmer's market on the common.
Right.
I mean, even now, there's farmer's market that we could do.
Any of those things.
People, people hold events at Sunny Meadows.
You know, just talk to people, you know what I mean? I actually went down to look for fish, but, so I went down, I talked to people, I was down there. But, I mean, maybe that, that probably isn't the demographic we're looking for because it's mainly.
Well, it's, that's a pretty wide demographic.
With some kids, but it's not really the demographic.
So I want to ask Lexi, are there events in town that you go to that draw you and your friends in that you come to that interest you? You know, that's, like, I don't, you say the farmer's market, I don't see many.
Yeah.
People younger than thirty-five.
But what I, what I like too about what Mark, you can come up if you want, Lexi. But what I, what I like too about what Mark said though is if there's an event that we think is gonna have a draw at the CCA or if, if there's an event at Sunny Meadows that we know has had a draw in the past, right? Or, it doesn't have to be, we pick one, it's pay attention to what's going on and then let's make sure one or two of us are there.
Right.
And, you know, coordinate with the people who are hosting the event and ask if it's okay if we can be there and just maybe have like a rolling calendar for a few months and see, especially with the spring coming up.
I think that would probably work better.
Maybe we come up with something that's maybe like a one card that you can hand people?
Yeah.
The pros and, you know, why, why we need you involved.
Yeah, I mean, even, even like at the library, you know, every month they have dads and donuts on a Saturday morning.
They do?
They do.
I'm a dad, I like donuts.
Are we driving you crazy, Lexi?
Fascinating to, to hear, but, you know, there, there are two events that come to my mind right away and I'm happy to follow up and send, you know, some others that, that might be open. We have a big concert coming up on April twenty-ninth. It's Sharon, Lois and Bram. They are a Canadian group that was really, really popular. I think they're still popular now, but their heyday was like late eighties into the nineties. So there are a lot of folks who are my age who, when I tell them that they're coming, they freak out. And then it's also a children's show, so you're getting folks who have children and who have parents. You guys would be more than welcome to set something up in the lobby, a booth. And I would really, no matter what you decide to do, I would focus in on a storytelling question because people do care about the community. Government, maybe not. I, I agree with you, don't, don't, don't use that word.
Or civics.
Civics, no engagement, but just, you know, what would make your community, our community more beautiful? What would make our community more fun, safer? What would make our community, very, very basic questions that both a seven-year-old could answer and an eighty-nine-year-old could answer. But I would focus on a storytelling question, something very qualitative. And I think that you could have conversations in that way, or you could have a public meeting and, and just have it, have a lighter feel to it. So the bar will be open or, you know, we'll have some refreshments or we'll have activities for kids while the parents are meeting. There's also Juneteenth too with the DEIC, that could be another great one. There are folks that come out from all over, so those are just two ideas. And again, I'm, I'm happy to follow up however, however makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So would, would someone on the board like to maybe kind of take a pass at events we know about that are coming up? And I like maybe Ken's idea of having a handout or even just a script list of questions or things that we can.
I'll take a shot at it.
That'd be great, Pat.
If you had a stack of like, you know, already pre-printed cards that when whoever shows up at one of these events just grabs a hundred of them, goes and stands by the end and says, you know, make Chelmsford more fun, you know, and, and just hand out a card, why, why we need you to get involved.
And I'm, I'm also wondering, Paul, if we could, if there's, we, we could also put on that card, like, if they have an idea and they want to just like send it in, is there a link they could click or?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Or a QR code they could scan?
QR code.
QR code, yeah.
Did you call it a QR?
I don't know what I called it.
QVC.
I obviously don't use them much. When I'm forced to in the restaurant. Well, this conversation's been harder than going into the high school classroom. So Pat, do you want to just let us know when you're ready to put it back on an agenda and we'll look at it?
Okay.
I think as long as we kind of work it over the next month before the spring events start, that, that would be great. Thank you. Okay. And thanks, Lexi. Next, we have the Select Board Strategic Plan and Growth Strategy Goal. Paul had suggested that we needed to continue the discussion on the growth strategy. And we did a little bit in the fall, I think, and said we were gonna talk a little bit more at that sewer meeting that we had. And then we also had this goal about the town strategic plan. So the question is, what if anything do we want to do to either advance either of these, to inform a decision better? Or drop them? So let me start. I guess I'll start with the town strategic plan since that one was first. Do we want to, do you want time to prepare and we schedule a more in-depth discussion? Or do you want to, do you have anything you want to talk about now? Okay. Do you want me to say something? Because I have a thought.
I, I mean, you're asking the question, looking at me, but.
No, I'm looking at the board. I'm looking at you because you're smiling.
I just.
He's always smiling. He's such an happy guy.
Never, never, never sad.
Okay. So I'll just give you the, the thoughts that I have right now on the town strategic plan. I, I still believe it would be valuable to have one. That said, I the recommendation that had come forward from the previous facilitator that we used really isn't development of a strategic plan. It was going into departments and working on refining their mission and their value statements. If the board wanted to consider doing something like this, you know, I look at what the school system did and they brought someone in outside to facilitate and help look at that with the capital plan. It, it's, it's a, it's a process, I think, where you would want someone to help facilitate it because if one of us is doing it, technically, we shouldn't be participating in it, right? It's kind of a conflict. One of my thoughts, Paul, I don't know if this is possible, is not to put out an RFQ, but is is it possible or is it, have you seen it done in municipalities where you might put out like a request for information? Either through comp buys or something else and just say, hey, like, we're not, this isn't for purposes of an award, but we'd like to understand what, what kind of services are out there in terms of strategic plan development for a municipality or rough orders of magnitude? Just to get a sense for what that would take, because if you're gonna, if we're gonna do this, that would be like the way to do it, to really do it right. If, if we want to try to do it ourselves, we can hobble through that, but we have to figure out how to, how to do that, how to implement it. Because I don't think you have someone on the town staff that can facilitate something like that. And what, the purpose of it would be to really lay out, and, and the growth strategy would kind of be part of that too, I think. And that's like one element, but there may be other pieces of it that you need to address. So it's, it's looking at what's going on externally and what's going, how are we set up internally? And where do we want to take the town? And then what are some of the specific actions and goals over the next couple, five years that we want to put in place for that?
What is, what is referred to when the government calls it is expressions of interest.
Okay.
As opposed to an RFQ, you know, in other words, it basically, it's, as the name suggests, expression of interest sort of saying, the town's interested in developing a strategic plan. You know, we've recently updated our master plan, it put together an implementation committee and so forth. We'd like to hear from vendors, lack of a better word, who would, would be interested in, you know, pursuing, you know, an opportunity with the town to develop that type of a plan. And so it's almost like they send you their background
Yeah.
resume kind of thing as opposed to a bid award. And then from there, you then sort of refine what you're looking for, then you would go to the next step.
Right, and it's less investment for them and yet it, it kind of raises our awareness of that they're out there. Does, I'm gonna stop talking. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, the other would be through MMA, if there's anything that might be there of any kind of a connector to resources that might help that process too. I, I don't know if they have anything. I've never seen it.
So do we want to, do we want to try to draft something, Paul, and bring it back to the board? I can help you with it or work with you on it.
If that's what the board wants to do.
Well, I'm, I'm, my thought would be, this would help inform our decision process. Unless the board members don't feel that they want to do the goal at all or look at it any further.
Remember, this, this, this goal was sort of on the cusp of making the cut or not in terms of, you know, did we want to engage it? We kind of said, now let's, let's kick it off to the third or fourth quarter and see what we're gonna do.
It would be better than kicking it down the road if we just at least got that information and could assess that and said, okay, is this too big of a bite for us at this point?
Right.
But it might set us up for next year or the board, whatever the board is, for next year.
George, do you have any other thoughts? Ken?
I, I, I agree, it's necessary and I, I think if we do as suggested, then we would understand the scope and the size of the lift. I don't know what the size of the lift is right now.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think that's an important question to answer before we decide, if we're gonna go forward right now, yeah. So, and I think this is a good way to get there.
But it's definitely something I know the town needs. I mean, I've seen, whether I'm at, whatever committee I'm at and, and different department heads that, you know, talk to me, it's, it's definitely, there should be a coordination, putting the house in order and making sure boards are all understanding what the end goal is together and departments understand what the end goal is together. Instead of, because one thing I've heard over the last few months is a lot of boards seem like they're, they've said to me, I just feel like I'm on an island and there's no cross-communication and they don't understand the strategies working together, things like that. So I think this would be very beneficial.
And, and I, that's, you know, you mentioned about the other committees. I think from that questionnaire that went out, I think the input from that might be helpful too as far as
Right.
how to go forward.
So if we get the size of the lift, we get the input back from, maybe if we get the input back and you say, okay, we clearly see a need and here's the lift, but if we get the input back and it doesn't look like, but the lift is a lot larger, you know what I mean? We can weigh it out and if the scale tips and we say, okay, we comp, we tackle it this year, but if it, if we don't see the need then, or, or the amount of effort it's gonna take to fix the need for this year. I, I just think the information's gonna, the solution's gonna kind of rise to the top when we get the information in.
Yeah. Anything else, Pat? I think it's going around the table? Okay. All right.
Good point.
So I'll work with Paul on that. And then the second part to that was the growth strategy.
Yeah, it's kind of putting those hand in hand.
Yeah, I think that comes right with it, you know?
And so we could also include specific language in the expression of interest to Paul about the overarching strategic plan and there's a specific interest too in diving deeper into the growth strategy.
Because I think when people hear growth strategy, they're thinking growth of the town.
Right.
Everybody says no.
Right, well, not everybody.
The growth strategy may be no more growth.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I think half the town is saying, I don't mind growth, and half the town is saying, I don't want any more growth.
Right.
They're very vocal about it.
But it's the type of growth.
Yep.
It could be growth in open spaces.
Oh, yeah.
Could be growth in, you know, a lot of different things, so.
And, and if it's growth in a well-thought-out, planned way, that is a lot
Yeah.
aesthetically pleasing and.
Right, doesn't necessarily mean
Exactly.
industry, like Amazon's coming.
Okay. Do you have any other thoughts, Paul?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and I left you four minutes to get us out of here by seven thirty.
No, you skipped number ten.
Oh, I'm still going?
Ten, you're still going.
Oh, the scheduling of the next legislative discussion. So first of all, I thought it was a great discussion with the legislators the last time. I'm really happy that we had such active participation. There was some discussion at the end about scheduling these regularly.
I did hear from two of the legislators saying that they liked the quarterly idea.
Yeah, I did too, and I know Senator Barrett was concerned about that and said semi-annually. So I wanted to, my, my thought here when I asked Paul to put this on the agenda was if we could maybe target a date for the next one, then we could say, thank you for coming to this one and please put this one on your calendars since they get so busy.
Yeah, based on everything I've heard, it's probably June, right?
Right, and I think, so I think that that's kind of what we're looking at or, or we wait a month or two and then pick a date in June, but we know what our June calendar pretty much is gonna look like, don't we?
When do they release their budget?
So, so the House is busy in April and the Senate's busy in May, which is kind of what brings us to June. And then if you wanted to do quarterly, you could then potentially get on a quarterly schedule at the end of every quarter instead of the beginning. Actually, our schedule only goes out till like the end of April right now, right?
Yeah, but, but.
You can extrapolate.
Because we know when, you know, we, we sort of get
Be every other.
we sort of get pivoted by town meeting at the end of April and that sort of, and Memorial Day in May, so that sort of pivots us. So your meetings in June would generally be, could be any of the dates actually in June, but it would generally be the fifth and the nineteenth.
Not the nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteenth.
That's a holiday.
That's a holiday, right, so there you go. So now it's either, you know, the, it's the twenty-sixth or the, yeah.
The fifth or the twenty-sixth or?
It's probably better to do early June because late June you're gonna get everybody taken off of vacations and summer and kids out of school. So I would say it's either June fifth or June twelfth, whatever the board would prefer.
Is, is, I'm sorry, is it, what day of the week is the twelfth? Is that a Tuesday?
No, Monday, sorry.
It's the Monday?
I'm talking about the, the Select Board meetings.
Oh, because we would meet the twelfth instead of the nineteenth?
Right. And, and, and we're gonna meet either the fifth or the twelfth because we can't meet the previous Monday, the twenty-ninth, because it's Memorial Day.
Yeah, we don't, not necessarily gonna meet both of those, but whatever they.
One of those two, right.
I mean, you could always say to legislators, we look forward to seeing you in, in the first half of June when we schedule, when we're scheduling now, but.
Or do you, yeah, but then we won't know that until April.
The fifth or twelfth, we're not sure yet.
Okay. Do you want, do you want, okay. Or do you just want?
Is there one that works better for them?
Do you want to just pick a date? Or, or ask them which one works better?
Yeah.
I would just pick a date. I'd take June, June fifth. That's, that's the weekend after Memorial Day, so we're probably gonna be meeting that day, that, that, that day.
Okay, yeah.
That's good logic.
All right, you left him a minute. Good job.
It'll be a fast budget review.
Get my bid awards done. The motion's gonna be longer than that.
Okay. Okay, bid awards, we have three DPW materials bid awards, one for crack sealing, one for traffic markings, and, and the third for hot mixed asphalt. We seek the board's confirmation to award the bid result for crack sealing to Seal Coating Incorporated, as presented, the bid price is $56,767. And for traffic markings, the low bidder is, is KS, K5 Corporation, and their bid price was $97,050, which was obviously an increase, it's the same amount of materials you bought the last year, but it's, it's up significantly, as, as you'd expect, with the inflation and the price of materials. Last year's bid result was 82,375, just to give you a sense on that. And then the final one is for hot mixed asphalt, and that, you see there were three bidders there, and the low bidder was Hulk, Wholesome NER, and their bid price was 77,44 per ton. So again, I seek the board's confirmation for those three bid awards as presented.
Any discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the crack seal bid award to Seal Coating Inc., DBA, in the amount of $56,767.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid results for the hot mixed asphalt to Wholesome NER, in the amount of $30,976.
You're not doing them in order?
No, disagree.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to, for the traffic markings to KS Corporation, in the amount of $97,050.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Sorry, Pat, next time I'll do them in order.
Okay, all right, I got John Souza here with me, our finance director, to just give an overview of the fiscal year '24 proposed town managers' operating capital budgets, and I think the thing to note is that it's subject to change, and, and we, we should know a lot more a month from now than we will today. And the reason for that is, with the new governor coming in, and new governors allowed until March 1st to submit their budget, in fact, today, they announced that the administration and legislative leaders agreed on a revenue target for the new fiscal year state budget for fiscal '24, 1.6% growth over the existing budget, and then if you factor in the newly imposed 4% surcharge on incomes over $1 million, that would give them a budget growth of about 4%. And the good news is, is although the 1.6% is rather modest, and that, we know that the surcharge is limited to transportation and educational services, the good news is, is that that 1.6%, particularly, is based upon the elevated levels of funding that, that have occurred in the last few years, that met, that exceed, greatly exceeded their revenue forecast. And in fact, at the same time, they announced this afternoon that the state was revising its revenue estimate for the current fiscal year by $110 million, and they were going to apply it towards paying off the state's unfunded pension liability. So anyway, the bottom line is, it appears that the legislature is, is forecasting modest growth in the year ahead, you know, as we know, we're, there's a lot of economic uncertainty. The other thing, so what'll happen, we've, we've been promised, and Pat was there, two weeks ago at the MMA meeting, or a week and a half ago, when Lieutenant Governor announced that even though her budget wasn't due until March 1st, she intended to provide municipalities by mid-February their projected local aid. So, and therefore that we may get those first cut of local aid assessments and charges and aid, which really is sort of, there's a floor going forward to, when the legislature takes up the budget, as we discussed earlier in April in the House, and then May in the Senate, and then hopefully reaching an agreement by late June or, or sometime in July. So that's where we're at. The other thing we should know in two weeks is, you know, we're, we're anticipating receiving our health insurance rate increase within the next two weeks as well, and that's a big number, because that's almost, you know, approaches 10% of our budget, and percentages there matter, so. So that's where we're at, so anyways, the budget is subject to change, if you go to the highlights, it's $155.5 million budget, a roughly 4% increase, and I think the interesting thing about this highlight, it's not the text on it, but basically what you're seeing right now, and this may be something that, sort of back of your mind, moving forward, is, if you remove the vocational school and the benefits and insurance and debt service, and you look at the town departments, basically, the school department versus the general government departments, you can see we're at a 2 to 1 funding ratio. School department budget is, is over $70 million, and the general government departments are $35 million. And so it just shows you the relative parameters of, of, of how money gets apportioned within the town departments. And then you can see benefits and insurance are, are almost approaching the level of general government departments at over $30 million. Again, I, I believe it's a fiscally responsible budget, the thing that I would note, in addition to the uncertainty, is that there is no growth in this budget in terms of positions at all. I mean, this would be, and it is being, that if you turn the calendar on July 1st, you have the same staffing, the same, you know, the same resources in terms of allocation, what's really changing are these fixed costs, and we'll go through them briefly, in terms of, you know, we're, we're a human service organization, most of our funding go to pay people. When you look at the school budget, the bulk of their additional funding goes to pay the staff and, and employees of the school department, and then you also got the special ed increases, and then in general government departments, we've got, obviously, people who provide services, whether they're fighting, you know, fires, or, or addressing public safety on the police side, or, you know, DPW plowing snow, and then the other big thing is, we, we have an increase significant in our trash contract, and we'll get into those details. And similarly, what happens with Neshoba Tech is, since they're a standalone government entity, they have those staff increases, but they also have the fixed costs that they've gotta fund it, in, inside their budget assessment, their benefits, their facilities, and so forth.
So Paul, when you say there's no additional.
Yeah.
Staffing.
Staffing, meaning.
Schools and?
No, on the town side, I, I don't control the school department, what I control is the.
But do you know what they're doing yet?
No, because they haven't, they haven't produced a budget plan.
Okay.
I, and I don't know, I'm gonna find out, I guess, on Friday morning, what Neshoba Tech is doing, but the school department will, will release their budget in a few weeks, and then they'll hold a budget hearing, so I don't know what their plan is. I do know that what's driving this, a lot of this increase above the staffing thing is this 14% increase in special education tuitions, and that has not been finalized by the state, but, but there's nothing that indicates it's not going to happen either, and I think that's the big challenge, is, is, you know, if, if you're dealing with 6%, whatever number you wanna apply for inflation, 5, 6, 7, whatever, and you're at 2.5% in a community such as Chelmsford, that more than 3/4 of your budget is based upon local property tax, that's capped by 2.5% levy, and we're only getting less than 14% of our budget from state aid, then you can see the squeeze that's happening to cities and towns and, and across the Commonwealth. So those, those are the overview highlights, you know, the priorities remain unchanged in education, public safety, you know, capital infrastructure, and health and human services. If you go to slide 6, you see the line item changes, and again, I bold those because, you know, of the 6 million, you know, over 5.3 million of that goes to two line items, Chelmsford Public Schools, $3.2 million increase, benefits and insurance, almost $2 million increase. We're fortunate, we're receiving a $0.5 million reduction in debt service, but, but we'll see later, that that's excluded debt, so it really doesn't help the operations of the town, because that excluded debt goes away when it's, the debt goes down. And then obviously, our, our other biggest departments on the town side are public safety and public works. Again, if you go to slide 7, you clearly see the additional revenue of the 6 million, 5 million of it's coming from the property tax. If you look over on slide 8, the five-year revenue expenditure comparison, again, those, you keep seeing the same theme, because where the money goes is where the people, and, you know, are, you know, the schools have almost 800 employees now, so their budget's going up by 11.7 million over five years. You see benefits and insurance going up by almost 30% in five years, and yet the town's debt service has declined by 22% or 3.2 million over that period. The next slide shows you a 10-year comparison, and again, as you'd expect, it tends to be the same. Over 10 years, you've got 20 more, $21 million additional investment in the schools, and again, benefits and insurance running over a million per year, and your debt service declining by 20% or 2.65 million over that period. You look at the, again, the school funding line is 70.7 million. If you, looking on the slide 11, you can see how this, this is a little extraordinary in terms of recent times, you see the, the weight coming forward of, you know, 3.2 million, 4.74%, 700,000 more than the prior year. Again, the bulk of that is the special ed tuition increases. If you look at the chapter 70 funding on the next slide from the state, you can see that it's not quite having that level, you see that we've been getting roughly less than 2% per year, except for last year, when the legislature had that surplus in the budget, and they provided us with a over 5% increase of $600,000. As I said, I, I think the expectation, I guess my question is, the hope would be, given that they, they have to airmark these additional revenues that we spoke of from the million, the, the 4% surcharge on incomes above $1 million, we're hoping to see that level of funding beyond what we, otherwise we get, which would be the $30 for a student, which is gonna bring us to those traditional levels of 150,000 per year. If that's the case, then, you know, it, it's gonna be a real struggle going forward. Moving on to slide 14, you see right now, in fiscal year '21, we're spending over $17,000 per student in the school system, we're now in fiscal year '23, so obviously that number's gone up. On slide 15, just trying to show, puts it into some perspective of what does that mean, you know, in a school day, or classroom, or such, but basically, you're spending $94 per school day per pupil, or if you've got a 22-student classroom, it's $374,000 investment in that classroom on, as the state counts per pupil expenditure, or it's $2,000 per day, per, in the classroom. But if you look towards other communities, and that's how you evaluate, one means of evaluating what you're doing, is you look at the per pupil expenditure for what the state defines as communities that are similar to Chelmsford, on slide 16, it's really on slide 17, you see the graphical analysis. And you can see Chelmsford is, is towards the left there, whereas the highest is Burlington, which, because of the extraordinary commercial revenue growth that the town of Burlington has, I mean, they're, they're spending in Burlington, $24,000 per pupil in the school system, and obviously Drake is at the other extreme, where, you know, they're spending $13,661 in FY '21, which is the latest data that's available from the state, you can see Chelmsford is below the midpoint.
What's the light blue bar?
The light blue bar is, I think it was the increase, I'm trying to think what that, with, per, per pup, oh, full-time per pup, yeah, per pupils, that's, that's their enrollment.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's what that's showing is per pupils, full-time total pupil FTEs. So you can see Chelmsford has more than Burlington, if you look at the light blue bar, but we have fewer students than Arlington, and we're about the same as Natick, and so forth. So that's, that's what the light blue bar is, I apologize for not having the legend on there. If you then go to slide 18, it shows you the student-teacher ratio, you see we're, we're now at 13 students in the most recent data of FY '22, student, in terms of the student enrollment versus the number of licensed teachers. Again, that's a ratio, it doesn't reflect every classroom, because we know some are greater than others. And again, if you look at, on slide 20, you know, there's the, there's the comparative data there, and you can see Chelmsford is slightly to the right there in terms of student-teacher ratio. So again, Burlington would be to the left, and Drake would be to the far right, so this one's sort of reversed, you want, would have a, a smaller student ra, teacher ratio, and you can see Chelmsford's beyond the midpoint. So again, I, I think the message is, is we're not excessive in Chelmsford, if you look at our student-teacher ratio, your per pupil expenditure, and then if you go on to slide 23, you see the same thing with the average class size, there, Chelmsford is tilting above the, the midpoint, because again, Burlington being to the left, you know, we're slightly above the midpoint there, so, what you're seeing is perhaps is the investment in Chelmsford going into the class, classroom in terms of class size. Slide 24 shows you the budget drivers that I alluded to earlier, again, if you look at the top four lines of that, that's all salary or staff, you know, your, your 2.5% cost of living adjustment, your step increases, meaning that for a person who's not at the top step, i.e. the first 10 years of, 12 years of their employment, they move up the COLAR, as well as a, a additional step for their experience until they max out, and then you get your lane changes, which is basically somebody who gets a higher degree, they move from a bachelor's to a master's, or, and such. And then you've got a, a annual early employee retirement incentive, that's part of the system. So again, you've got well over $2.2 million there, of the 3.2, going to those costs, and you see the bulk of the item is that, third from the bottom, the out-of-district special education tuitions at 14% rate increase is $750,000. So that's really what's driving it there. The Neshoba Tech assessment, again, this is just a projection, we'll know more on Friday, what we do know under slide 26 is, our enrollment was up by five students to 212, we're the largest sending community to the Neshoba Tech district, the district's enrollment increased last October 1st by 25 students, so they now have a total of 713 member, community students in the system, but because our growth was less than the growth of the district, our percentage share of the total district growth dropped slightly from 30.13 to 29.73%. And again, we shall have more details on Friday, which we'll get out to you as soon as they become available. Next, slide 27, just shows you the enrollment growth over time, again, we seem to be levelizing at around 200, 212 area. And then on slide 28, the next slide, it shows you the per pupil expenditure, and again, it's a high school, a technical high school, so we're likely exceeding $21,000 per student expenditures at the, at the, at the school district. And then slide 29 just shows you, as we heard from Dr. Pidgin, when she met with us back in December, again, their budget drives are very similar, contractual staff increases, special education staffing and services, they have to fund their transportation contract increases, they obviously get hit like Chelmsford did with the Middlesex County Retirement Increase Assessment, and then they have facility and technical program costs. Then moving on into the general government stuff, you know, Chief spoke earlier about the number of calls, Chief Spiny did, we're, we're maintaining a ratio of 79 full-time employees, 54 sworn officers. The next slide on 31 shows you their calls, volume of, so calls answered by cruisers, and you can see we're at that 36,000 level, you know, again, not much variation in the last four or five years, you're in that 35, 36,000 level, and you can see our employee level has been constant there since 2013. And similarly on fire, 63.5, next slide, full-time employees, 52 firefighters, 11 minimum per shift, and slide 33 shows you the call volume for the fire department, and you can see we're, again, at that 6,000 level, you know, which has really been, we've been in the sixes, you see, for a decade. You can see the staffing level's been consistent going back to 2016, at 63.5 in the department. Employee compensation, nice, that moving into the higher-cost drivers, again, factoring in the non-union employees' cost of living increases, and the settled contract that we anticipate will be funded with the patrol officers at town meeting, we're at $860,000. Moving to the next slide of employee and retiree health insurance, again, we'll know our, our number in the next two weeks. The average is, is just under 6%, but Chelmsford, being an older community, in terms of our employee mix in the larger community, we tend to run above the average. So again, we're using a number of 8% now, hopefully, we'll come in slightly below that, and so we got a, we have an increase of just over $1 million budgeted for employee and retiree health insurance. The next slide shows you the subscriber growth, Finance Director John Souza tracks that and provides this slide annually, you can see, going back the last decade, our numbers have risen, back in, you know, even if you go to 2013, we're at 1424, 600 employees, 824 retirees, today we're at 675, drawing the benefit, and 949 retirees. So there's two things happening, one is our employee growth has, has happened, is also people are drawing, people who are eligible to draw from our plans, are drawing from our plans. And if you look on slide 31. And if you look on slide 37, you can see what this really costs. If you, a Blue Cross HMO family plan, the total annual premium for the current year is over $27,000. The town share is over 20,000, approaching 21,000. And if you factor in an 8% increase, that's going to be over $22,000 in the upcoming fiscal year. So again, if you're hiring employees at 40, 50, 60,000, you're paying a third of that cost if they're drawing on a family healthcare plan. The other, next slide shows the Middlesex County Retirement Assessment. It's $11.3 million, or an increase of over 7.5%, or almost $800,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. And then we know behind it, because they do two-year assessment schedule, it's going to be up another $745,000, or 6.5%. And again, the retirement, on the next slide shows you the retirement schedule history. And the key slide in this whole thing is the fourth column, which is called Payment on Unfunded Liability. This year coming in, right now, we're paying $8.9 million, next year it'll go up to $9.6 million, and the following year it'll go up to $10.3 million. And you can see it's roughly 90% of the whole cost, this is unfunded pension liability. And this is scheduled to be paid off in 2036, which is only a dozen or so years from now, assuming the law stays, remains in place. And then later on, you'll be receiving official notice that, and I don't want to get off the topic here, but it does affect retirement assessment. The legislature provided a local option for retirement systems about whether to provide a cost of living adjustment on the base salary, which is roughly $16,000 for all retirees in fiscal year 23. So basically, you'd go from 3% to 5%. And what has to happen on that, and I'll be providing you with the written details when they arrive from the system, is two-thirds of the cities and towns in the retirement system have to vote to authorize that increase. What they would do is it would increase the town's retirement assessment in later years, because they know you can't make an adjustment to the current year, since we're more than halfway through it, and you're already budgeting for the upcoming years. So that's a separate discussion that I am informing you about, but we'll have the details when they arrive formally from the, because we've asked them, could you provide us with the cost for the individual community as opposed to the system as a whole? And that data is forthcoming. Solid waste and recycling collection, the next slide, as I noted in my opening comments, we've got a new solid waste and collection contract agreement that's going to become effective on July 1st. We had three qualified bidders, the lowest bid was up 21%. And there'll also be a new hauler, as the contract was awarded, and we provided the notice to proceed to E.L. Harvey to provide that service. As we discussed the last time, the good news is, is you will see weekly recycling collection and some leaf disposal days and so forth. But the cost is going up, because again, fuel, employee costs, equipment by the collectors. And then similarly, our tipping fee at the trash-to-energy facility in Covantor and Havrell is going up by 4%. So we're, we'll be paying over $97 per ton to dispose of solid waste, that's an extra $8,000. So again, this roughly comes out to a half million dollar increase for collection and disposal. Those are the main ones, you see property and casualty insurance, again, another market that's just reeling in terms of premiums increases because of the cost of natural disaster, as well as liability. I mean, this is, this also includes liability for public officials, you know, law enforcement liabilities, you know, you know, those markets are really reeling from the natural disasters and then the man-made ones, unfortunately, in terms of the liability issues. And then workers' comp insurance, premiums increase with your growth in your payroll. So again, we're expecting an increase there of 5%. Medicare tax, again, is tied to your payroll, so there's another $50,000, or 4.5%.
They raised the limit on that, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Substantially.
So the debt service, the good news is, is our debt service is good. The, as noted by Standard and Poor's, we last went out to market last June, we'll be anticipating going out to market again this June. If you go to the next slide, our excluded debt service is decreasing by $400,000, so the property tax automatically cuts that off because it's restricted, which is why it's called excluded debt. So the good news is, is that sort of takes a little bit of the increase out. So we'll be down to almost $1.7 million out of a tax levy that's over $110 million of debt service. So it's extraordinarily low for excluded debt. But it doesn't provide any relief to the operating budgets, because again, those monies were voted in, approved only for the debt of a particular project outside of the limits of Proposition 2.5. The next slide shows you that schedule, how it's been declining for FY '24, most of that tied to the sewer projects. And then the next slide shows you a non-excluded, which is your capital budgets every year, projects that were included within the levy limit, such as the fire station expansions and so forth. So that is decreasing as well by 141,000 in fiscal '24. The next slide does show the FTEs, again, so for the town side, that'll be 254.9 for FY '24. Again, I've not seen the school numbers, because again, their budget isn't out yet. But you can see historically in the last five years, and in the last, you know, 15 years, I'm sorry, the increases tended to have been more on the educational side during that period. Again, so you sort of, now move on, next slide shows your budget drivers, which I just went through, so I'm not going to go through them again. The next slide shows you new revenue sources. And then, and then the next slide, which we just flipped through real quickly, again, looking at it on a five-year basis, the key thing here is showing on the right-hand columns in the parentheses, how the property tax is growing as a proportion of the town's budget from almost 76% to almost 78%, and how state aid is falling, in that case, from 13% down to 12.5%. And then the other thing notably of this, your chapter 70, which is your educational funding, over five years is up about 13%, assuming the projections that I have, which I think are optimistic at this point, are hold true.
Paul, back on slide 49.
Yeah.
Hitting the excess levy capacity for that $778,000, what does that do to property taxes?
It goes up.
But it's more than the 2.5, right?
Well, no, well, yeah, it will, but.
Because you're recapturing.
Your levy is constrained by 2.5, if you're under the levy. So roughly, if we talked about it, what would it do to the property tax? Our rule of thumb is a million dollars is $70 to the property tax, average single-family property tax bill.
So if house values don't change this year, your bill's still going to go up 60 bucks, roughly.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Yeah, that's what's going to happen, yeah, based on what we're seeing. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Now, to be fair, you always have a little bit of excess levy capacity, but it likely won't be 778, because you never get the quite rounding, and then when the numbers come in on growth afterwards.
You can't go over.
Can't go over, right. So then going back to, moving forward to slide 51, 10 years, again, you see the same thing, you went from under 75% was your property tax to almost 78%. Again, you see the state aid going back over a decade from 13.6% up to, down to 12.6%. And sadly, you look at your chapter 70 funding over a decade, if what I'm projecting, you know, you're not even at 2% per year. And again, it's a real challenge. Looking back to the property tax bill back on slide 53, we sort of break that out. If the average bill this year is 82.35, you can see by departmental level, you know, that roughly most of the taxes go towards public schools and benefits and insurance. Everything else is in the three-digit range. And then if you look at the valuation, what's also driving it on the residential side on slide, the next slide 54, is the shift to residential values from commercial valuation. Again, if you went back five, you know, five years or so, you know, you're at 82%, now you're at 84.5%, probably approaching 85 in fiscal '24, because those values are the calendar year that just ended last month. That's, you know, it's a tough situation. Again, looking at.
Would you, with that comment, it's a tough situation, would you project, because of our sewer constraints, it's only going to get worse?
It's going to get, it's likely to get worse barring any change in the commercial market, yeah. I mean, if residential values continue to appreciate greater than commercial values, and there isn't a sewer to grow things forward, yeah, it's likely, it's likely to be a constraint. But I think it's, I think that, the other, the other thing I would suggest would be the town's plan or desire for growth could also be the constraint. Look at what you, look at the debate you're seeing on Richardson, Rivenex Road. I think those issues are a constraint, that, you know, in terms of traffic and other impacts. So even if sewer weren't a constraint, you know, we saw the symbol constraint when, you know, in these types of discussions, when, that infect, you know, traffic and other quality of life issues. On slide, the next slide 55, again, looking at rank, we keep talking about the property tax and beating upon it, but for the year that just finished, the year we're in right now, we, our ranks remain unchanged. We're still 77th, meaning first being Weston in the state, and 351 being a community out in Western Mass. Taxes went up in Chelmsford, you know, but they went up everywhere. And our relative rank remained unchanged, we're in the high 70s, which I guess is.
It's actually a little bit better.
Probably better than we were, you know, five, six years ago.
When you were 68, right.
In the high 60s, and, you know.
There was a point there you could toot your hornball, I mean, that's it.
Yeah, but let's be realistic. What would really, what would really blow this out of the water? A school project, let's be honest.
Yeah.
Some of, to be fair, and I don't like the sugarcoat things, but if we were like Barriker or Tewksbury or some of our neighboring communities that had a school project, and we have one submitted, when that time comes, that's going to push you, because that will be an excluded debt project, and that's going to, that's going to push us, accelerate you right back to, you know, where you were probably back in 2007, probably to the low 60s. And that's, and that's why, you saw in my earlier comments, if you've got your declining debt, it's because we, unlike most other communities our size, we haven't had a major school project. And you know what those are running these days, you know, if you're running 50% and you're building a middle school, what have you, and those schools are in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and, you know, that's what's going to be the game changer, when and if that moment arrives. So I don't want to sit here and take false credit, like somehow we're, John and I are magicians and we're able to, you know, beat the system. We're at levy limit, but really what's the anomaly is we've not had a major project since, I think the last major project really was the former school project, you know, back in the, you know, beginning part of the century, almost now 16.
Is splitting the tax rate playing into this, too?
Not materially, honestly, you know, we, it, no, I don't think it's, that's really going to make that much of a difference. I mean, you could, you could drop yourself lower if you did that, because you'd be shifting more to commercial, but I think it's, I think it's really driven by the lack of a major debt exclusion.
Okay.
And then again, looking at the most recent, the next slide shows you the most recent data, the last three years for our neighboring communities. I know it's a busy slide, but again, it's sort of everywhere. You know, we were up $406 in FY '23, Barriker was up by 9.34%, because they're at full classification, so there was nowhere to hide, as we talked back, back in November, at $579 average single-family tax increase. I guess the only thing that's relatively good, where Chelmsford scores the highest, is your tax bills are percentage of your income level, we're first, meaning lowest of those other communities, measured by your per capita income, which again, these are all state data, not something that I create. Again, moving on to state aid, away from the property tax discussion, again, right now I'm forecasting $12.5 million of chapter 70. Let's hope we're there when the budget is done by the state in the next five months. And same thing with general government aid. In the past, that was tied by the previous governor to the growth in the state budget. I don't know what they're going to do, because if it was 1.6%, we're not going to get to that number, but again, I don't know how, we don't know what the new metric the new governor's going to use. I think everybody's waiting to see. Next slide is local receipts. Big number there, obviously is motor vehicle excise at 5.6 million. Good news isn't, you haven't seen it yet, but I guess it's good news for the town in terms of our forecasting. Our Finance Director John Souza has received the motor vehicle excise commitment. Those bills go out every February for people who've owned a vehicle from the previous year. Those numbers are still up slightly. It's probably the fact that the increasing manufacturer suggested retail price for vehicles, whether at least a purchase is going up. And then the other thing is, meals taxes remain strong. Again, that's because dining is going up, the cost of dining, and then also permit fees. We're forecasting that that number may be achievable if, as expected, the project on Princeton Street, you know, the.
Breaks ground.
Breaks ground.
What's the permit fee on that?
It's in, it's in, they're not going to pull out the permits at once, but we know it was well over a million dollars. We know it was well over a million dollars, yeah, you've got 400 units. And then similarly, Nine Act and Road's been permitted, but we haven't seen, we've seen them go out and do the work in the street, but we're hoping that by next fiscal year that that building will be raised, and there'll be some permits pulled on that. Those are sort of the two big ones that we've got our eyes on right now, that sort of leads us to say with some confidence that that permit fee number, you know, will be attained. I get, yeah, available funds, again, there's not much there, if you look at the right-hand column in terms of change. And then next slide, inflationary, again, that's the game changer. If the CPI for Boston, they only provide us every other month, so we won't see the January figures yet, but if you're running 7%, whereas in all these prior years, you're running less than, you know, somewhere around 2%, 3%, that's what squeezes the budgets on the town side. And again, going forward, the, again, what can we do about it? Again, keep the push, as we discussed with our legislators, for chapter 70 levels, education levels above the minimum funding levels, that doesn't keep pace with inflation. Same thing with the chapter 90 for the roadway construction. The 62 is the, next slide is the ongoing plea for addressing with other post-employment benefits reform, but that doesn't seem to have got, got no traction in the last administration or legislature, and there's nothing indicating that it's going to happen now. Before we go to John Souza and the finance plan, the budget is tight. And why I say tight is, this budget is predicated on solid support from the state, which we don't know about, there's a few factors that haven't kicked in. The other variable that's in there, quite frankly, is we don't have settled contracts with a number of our employee unions, and that's not baked in here either, because we can't fund those contracts in advance of settlement. So when I sit here and say the budget is tight, it is tight. We probably are extended or maybe even overextended when everything comes in. The problem is you don't know the timing of those things and the individual components. So at the end of the day, as when John presented this revenue forecast back at Falltown Meeting, and we discussed in December, and where we are today, it ought not to be any surprise that in a period of high inflation, you know, and uncertain state aid, that, you know, it's a very difficult challenge. So we'll see how it goes. With that, I'll turn it over to John Souza, who'll give an overview of the capital expenditure plan.
John?
Good evening. Thank you, Town Manager Cohen. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in December, I provided the board with a brief summary of the capital plan and this slide, just to kind of tie it all together. Tonight, we'll take a little more in-depth look, just at some of the projects. So as we discussed last month, the capital plan, the 17 projects that the Capital Planning Committee recommended, total 4.38 million. When you deduct the recaptured funds, the amount borrowed is just over 4.16 million. You can see that the most significant investments are in the areas of public works, public facilities, and school buildings. The first project, if we go to municipal technology, please, the, there's two projects that are recommended. The first is a security camera upgrade for 118,000. As you can see from the slide, this includes upgrades of all the police department cameras, as well as addings cameras at several of the fire stations, as well as Friendship Park and the CCA building. It also includes. It also includes continuation of our program to upgrade door security to an electronic system. You can see that will add a few more town buildings to that list, which enhances efficiencies and better control of the keys and doors. The next area is under municipal administration. It's titled Town Clerk, but it, because our town clerk's actually been leading the efforts in the building to better organize the records and store them, but it really affects a number of offices. And you can see that this project adds, it converts your traditional water-based fire suppression system to dry. The reason for this is we have two rooms in the building, lower level or LL03, and sub-basement or SB03, where we have important records stored. And at the time that the fire suppression system was installed in this building, it wasn't anticipated that we weren't using the rooms really for record storage like we are now. So the issue that you have is, you know, should there be a fire event, you don't want the water-based system and the efforts of trying to put out the fire to actually destroy all the records. So that's the reason for that. The next area is the public libraries, and this may, this picture may look familiar to many of you. This is a retaining wall that runs along the parking lot outside Adams Library, and it's between the parking lot and the sidewalk along Boston Road. Although many of us think as the library is still relatively new, in reality, it's really, you know, the big addition was added over 20 years ago, and this wall has been leaning, and the goal is to completely reconstruct this wall so to eliminate any possible hazard of it leaning over into the sidewalk or towards the roadway. And the cost for that is $100,000. Moving on to public safety, there are two recommended projects for the fire department. The first is a replacement of the fire investigation vehicle at a cost of just over $68,000. And then the replacement of their service and rescue truck, which is an older model truck, the cost for that is just under $112,000. Then we move on to public works. The funding has remained the same for sidewalk improvements as well as road improvements, $350,000 and $400,000, giving us a total of $750,000. The sidewalk assessment should be, report should be due next month, and we'll know more. For Town Meeting, we'll have more detailed sites as to where these funds are working in cooperation with DPW, we'll have more exact sites of where the work would take place. Also in public works, the next project involves purchasing a Sander truck body for one of the newer trucks, as well as purchasing brining system equipment for the entire fleet. And for those of you that may be familiar with this or not, what the brining, the reason for the brining equipment is that it allows the public work staff to apply a salt water or brine solution to the roadways, like sort of pretreat the roadways, and it does reduce rock salt usage, which will help with operational costs because you may remember from the Town Manager's earlier presentations that rock salt has risen dramatically in price. Also in public works, our next project, $150,000 was recommended to fund the design work for the rehabilitation and reconstruction of the school street bridge over Stony Brook. The cost for that's $150,000. And as our DPW Director explained, there were some deficiencies in the arch and other parts of the retaining walls that need to be addressed. Going on to public municipal facilities, there's one project, and it's actually the elevator in this building, the town office building, for a cost of $480,000. Although we don't know the exact date of how old the elevator is, it's comfortable to say that it at least goes back to, I would say, the 1980s or before because this building underwent a major renovation in the 80s to turn it into the town offices that we know today. And as the second bullet point points out, it's very important to keep this elevator up to date and well-functioning because it is the only means of access to this floor for someone that, you know, needs assistance to access the second floor. And then we move on to school facilities, just to walk through some of those projects. First one is at the Harrington School. $316,000 will fund the boiler replacement. The current boilers that are in operation now are installed in 2002, and under this plan, three units will be replaced with two. The next project is, involves just under $190,000 for HVAC upgrades at the Westlands Community Ed Center. Moving on to the next project, we have $325,000 of funding for the elevator replacement at the Westland School. That elevator is approximately 33 years old. And then the next school facilities project actually involves a boiler replacement at our high school for $207,000. You may recall that on the current year's capital plan, Town Meeting approved $325,000 of funding for the boiler replacement. Unfortunately, due to the complexity of this project and cost increases that we have not seen in the past, the initial funding was allowed facilities to purchase the boiler units, but additional money is required for the demolition and installation. So that's the reason for this project. The next school facilities project also involves an elevator replacement, and this is at the high school, for $480,000. As you see on the slide, this elevator is approximately 48 years old and is approaching or is just about beyond its useful life that we can expect. So this is an important one to take care of. Next school facilities project is part of the school's, school department's efforts to upgrade a number of their kitchens and throughout the school district. And so this involves the remodeling of the high school food preparation and kitchen areas, similar to projects that have been done in many of the other schools in town, and the cost for that is just over $641,000. So that completes a look at the projects, and then, as we know, the next step will be consideration of these by Town Meeting in April. And then finally, when Town Meeting approves, we would then work to, I would work to issue bonds for that in June. So that brings that to a, brings a presentation to a conclusion. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Right, and then in conclusion, the only addition to the operating capital budget is we have our enterprise funds as well, which you have in your packet. I'll go through them in detail, but sewer, stormwater, PEG access, golf course, forum, and so forth. And really, there's nothing extraordinary in those budgets either. Again, mostly driven by payroll and so forth. So that's sort of the budget scenario. Our next step is, I've submitted these materials to the Finance Committee. I expect within the next couple of weeks, Finance Committee will start their budget reviews with department heads. And then again, as information comes in that modifies this, I'll keep you and the Finance Committee updated.
Any questions or comments? Thanks, Paul.
Next item is my second draft of the 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting warrant. Again, less than a month from now, in four weeks from now, you'll be asked to sign the warrant for the Spring Annual Town Meeting, including town election. So next meeting, I'll bring you another draft, and then the final document will come. At this point, there's 30, 31 articles. I was notified by the Cemetery Superintendent David Boyle that the West Cemetery, what's listed as Article 29, the West Cemetery Cemetery Post and Rail Fencing has been withdrawn. I've sent this out to department heads and to see if there is any change like that or if I missed something. The, last meeting, I gave you the actual list, but this time I've given you the draft text of the warrant. Again, the first 17 articles are traditional with every, you know, Spring Annual Town Meeting, which is a budget town meeting, your operating budgets and so forth. I think, and then the last half of the warrant are the community preservation, there's a number of community preservation requests this year. And really, the middle are a couple, one general bylaw change to adopt fees for seal of weights and measures inspections. And then there are two zoning bylaw amendments that the Planning Board had their hearing on in this room last Wednesday night. This has to do with non-conforming uses and structures. I guess it was a section that was omitted when they did the most recent change. And then similarly, there's a zoning bylaw amendment regarding dimensional requirements for single and two-family homes. And then I think the most notable one is Article 21. The Clean Energy Committee and Sustainability Committee has submitted an article for the enactment of a specialized energy code for the design and construction of buildings. This is beyond the Green Communities standard zoning energy code. This is what's called as the opt-in code, and I expect that at your meeting in February, that you'll receive a presentation from the committee, and I imagine it'll also be at the Finance Committee as they seek to get the word out of what this would mean and why they're advancing it. I think we know why they're advancing it as part of their philosophy and mission as a committee, but it'll give the details out of this new code that becomes effective basically six months after it's adopted, which increases energy efficiency for-
And this is like an enhanced-
Yeah, right, it's an enhanced code, right. So that's the draft warrant. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
The Article 18, Sealer of Weights and Measures, is this a new, is this an update to, what's the amendment to the bylaw part?
Right now, the Sealer of Weights and Measures are governed by Chapter 131 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Basically, it's very similar to what the town did years ago with dog permit fees and so forth, is you default to the state unless you have your own. Six months ago, perhaps it was, we were notified by the new executive director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Government, Jenny Raitt, that basically the towns needed to raise their fees because they weren't covering the cost of the inspectors to do the fees. Therefore, the only way to do that is to adopt a bylaw that has a new fee schedule. And so what you see in Article 18 is the proposed fee schedule. So basically, it covers things like the fee for gas pumps would be $40.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to read it. I just wanted to know what the-
Yeah, that's how it is. Basically, that's why it's here. It's never been, it's never been in our code before because we defaulted to the state, but we now, as we're allowed to do, is we have to adopt the bylaw to set the fees for these devices.
And so does this, does this give us more than what the state requirement is?
Yes, yes. But what it is, is it's really a transactional thing. We basically pay an assessment to Northern Middlesex Council of Government, and then the, but the town, it doesn't come out of the tax levy, it comes out of those who own these scales and devices, you know, whether it's the electronic scanners or the scales for cement trucks and so forth, or oil trucks and so forth. So, yeah, it's basically the request to meet those costs.
And then my second question is with Article, so Article 23 and 25 involve land proposals by Conservation and/or the Community Preservation Committee. On Article 23, either here, if you know it, or maybe the next meeting or whatever, can you clarify what the parcel is, 29104316? Because I can't find it. And I don't know, I don't know, so I put it up on the screen on Wilson Lane.
No, no, it's Lot 18. So it's the one that says 18. See, you've got it highlighted there in the green, 29104-18. It's right there.
This one?
Yep. Lot 18 on Assessors Map, 29 Block 104.
No, but it says-
That's the reference to the Registry of Deeds. It's Registry of Deeds in Book 11363, page 316. So the lot is earlier in that sentence. So if you go to the third line down-
Right, earlier in the sentence, it says-
Shown as Lot 18 on Assessors Map 19 Block 104, and more fully described than a deed recorded in the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds in Book 11363, page 316.
Okay, so it's this one right here?
Yeah, it's that one there.
Right, thank you.
And then the other one on 25-
Yeah, I found that one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, next up, you still have one more here.
And then the last thing I have in my report is we received notification from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation that the Vinyl Square Safety Improvement Project is eligible for funding under federal highway aid. So where this goes from here is, we have money, we know, to do the 25% design and so forth, but whether this moves forward is, we'd have to get on the Northern Middlesex Council of Government Transportation Improvement Plan. So the good news is, is we qualify, and then we'll move forward with this project. But as they made clear in this, is this is just telling you you're eligible, and really the responsibility or the determination of funding will go to the Transportation Improvement Plan by the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. So it's a critical step forward, but I just don't want people to think that we got a letter from Mastodot, we're funded. No, what it says is you're eligible for funding, which is, you know, so we're optimistic, and, you know, I think we'll continue with the, we have the earmark to do the 25% design, we'll get the community input, and then hopefully receive favorable action at a future date and time from the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments Transportation Improvement Committee, which is the, it's not what it's called, it's called the-
MPO.
MPO, yeah.
Thank you. Next up, we have an announcement on determination of releaseability for executive session minutes. The following minutes were approved for release. December 13th, 2021, a joint meeting with the Select Board and the School Committee and January 9th, 2023, Segment 1. And the following minutes were held not for release, January 9th, 2023, Segment 2. Next up, we have liaison reports and referrals. Mark?
Yeah, I wanted to mention the prior chair, if you will now, Barry Jefferson, has stepped away from the Jefferson, excuse me, from the Roberts Field Advisory Committee. I think he left on the 26th, and wanted to thank him for everything that he's done over the years to really move forward with the Roberts Field and Friendship Park. They've done a great job, and it looks like the group, the committee looks to be still well-staffed and so forth, and I believe Marcus Bush is taking over his chair now, so that's it.
Thank you. George? Ken?
Nothing.
Yeah, just what Paul has referenced a couple of times today, on this Friday, February 3rd at 9:30 a.m., the Shobo Superintendent will have a draft presentation of the upcoming budget. And follow up on that next Tuesday, February 7th at 6:30, they will have a budget hearing if anybody has any concerns and recommendations for it. Just wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you. From the Conservation Commission, our Conservation Agent, David Koontz, has been getting a lot of anecdotal reports recently of wildlife sightings, and he wants people to know that if they email photos to him with the date, time, and location, he will post them to the Conservation Commission's webpage to share. His email is DKoontz, D K O O N C E, at chelmsfordma.gov. From the School Committee, Dr. Lang, Dr. Hirsch, and the School Committee have been participating in DEI training with the IDEA Group during January, and the kindergarten registration was held on January 24th and 25th. Any families that were unable to make those dates should complete the registration packet and drop it at the School Administration Central Office Monday through Friday between 8 a.m. and 4 p.m. And the Planning Board hearings coming up in February include, on February 8th, there will be a new public hearing for a revised proposal for 270 Billriker Road, and there will be continued public hearings for the zoning articles that are on the draft Town Meeting warrant, as well as 264 Groton Road. And then on February 22nd, there will be a continued public hearing for River Neck Road, and please note that the start time of that will likely be earlier at 6:30 p.m., but you should watch for the formal agenda posting. And then I just had a question for the board. We've had some feedback regarding nip bottles and litter and things. I didn't know if that was something you wanted me to put on the agenda for discussion at all, because we can't really talk about it over email, so I didn't know if we should just bring it to closure.
Yeah, maybe we want to put something on the Fall Town Meeting one. Yeah, maybe we want to put something on the Fall Town Meeting one.
Yeah, if you would like it on an agenda, my second question is, is it anything that we want Town Council there for? Because he's planning to come in on February twenty-seventh, so I could plan it on that date.
Sure.
Does that, Mark, what did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said no.
No, no, you're all right.
George, can I?
We should probably have a discussion on it at least.
Yeah.
So put our topic, and we can go over it.
Okay. So, does that make sense, do it on the twenty-seventh?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And we can let Paul Haverty know as well. And so it is eight twenty-nine? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Thank you, everyone.